I will call this meeting to order, the regular city council meeting for Monday, February 28th, 2022. And we're already standing. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Reagan.
Present.
Pratt.
Here.
Bellinger.
Here.
Sebold, Ryan, Gilroy.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
I did receive a notification from Councilman Sebold and Councilman Ryan that they are not able to be here this evening, so I would entertain a motion to excuse Hanson's.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Second.
All right, thank you. Both, if, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And now I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda, if there are no changes to be made.
Move to per agenda.
Thank you. Do I have support? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No? All right, motion carries. Now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation, if anybody here would like to come forward at this time. All right, no audi-- yes, thank you. Please state your name, entity, address.
Michael Yan is the chief for NISA, and I have the stats for 2021.
Great.
For calls.
Please come forward. Thank you so much. Thanks for being here, chief.
So actually, it'll be a more formal one given at the NISA meeting.
Okay.
Next Thursday. But since I was coming tonight, I thought I'd go ahead and bring you guys some copies.
Well, thank you.
As you can see, if you look at the graph there, Williamson's in the light blue, and we had 515 fire and EMS calls in the city of Williamson in 2021. So that's the largest out of any of the group. Williamson Township would be second with 362. We got Leroy with 184, Wheatfield 153, and Weberville for 147. We also went to Okemos twice last year, and it was 11, or 44 times we went into Meridian Township, so total, if you combine them all. It was definitely a busy year for us. We were up about 353 calls. Some of that can be attributed to COVID, but not all of it. So things seem to kind of be slowing down, but then the last, the last week, we've been back to, we're running an average of about anywhere from five to eight calls a day, which is up to from about two to three calls a day when I started six years ago. So definitely on the increase. The second thing I wanted to say along those lines is I know there's been, from what I understand, some questions of the police presence in the area. And we have an extremely good working relationship with all the law enforcement agencies in our area, Amien County, and we do deal with Meridian Township. But by far, I'd say the best relationship we have is with Williamson PD. Rod Feaster, my deputy chief, and myself meet with Williamson PD on a weekly basis. I know when we had the accident out here where the gentleman ran over the guy on the moped, we had people walking up and down the sidewalk yelling, saying that this is why we need more police presence in our area, and people speed through here and run this light, and you know, this corner we have out here is very confusing to a lot of people. And so if you're speeding through it, it definitely makes a difference. We've definitely seen a drop since Chief Wolf's taken over. Not that the previous chief didn't do a great job, and we had a good relationship with him too, but people have commented about the presence to us and said that, you know, it seems like things are, people are much slower on the road down here. So we definitely endorse his efforts.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's so nice to have you here, and please feel free to come back anytime you have any news to share.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment at this time? At this time? All right, we'll move along then. I'm looking for approval of council meeting minutes of January 24th, 2022.
We'll go through council meeting minutes, 24, January 24th. Point four.
Great, thank you so much, Terry. Do I have support?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Noah, you had an opportunity to review council panel.
Yes, I did, and you'll notice that there's page after page. So I'm going to make a recommendation that you won't cancel.
Right, I know, because it's a big dollar amount.
But I did have a chance to go through all the bills. I did question one, and Rachel responded to it. It was the one regarding the picnic tables and the park. It just didn't really establish which project it was titled to, but Rachel explained it, so I accepted that. So I would like to make a motion to approve check 75160 dated 1/19/22 through check 75280 dated 2/18/22, ACH 193 through 2/25, in a total of $2,205,781.
Great, thank you so much.
And open the floor to any other questions.
Yes, and that was a great question, and the question that Noah had was for the picnic tables over at Volunteers Park, and so that's a pass through because that was funded, but it was a great question because he just didn't have enough information, and Rachel was able to answer that question for us. Does anyone have any questions regarding tables? Terry?
Just being the new guy, I'm looking at this thing, Card Member Service, SAD is right in front of all of them.
Yes.
I understand Rachel only has so many characters, and I feel, but I feel SAD must mean something. Does everybody know what SAD means? Besides being--
It's Scott degrees. So those are initials of different staff members. So whoever has a card and is purchasing--
So it's a whole person.
Yes, yes. So, yep, that would be Rachel right there, and Nancy Vaughn from the Police Department. You'll get to learn all those initials.
If you'd like to spend some time with me--
You're welcome.
But great question, good information to have. With that being said, do I have support for Noah's motion?
Support.
Thank you so much. Holly, will you call the roll for that council panel, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lianion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, we're on to our action items for this evening. It's a relatively short list, so we will start out with the reappointment of Derek Pelphosh to the zoning board of appeals for a term to expire 1/1/2025. Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to point Derek Pelphosh to the zoning board of appeals for a term to expire January 1st, 2025.
Thank you so much. Do I have support? Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lianion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Now is our Williamson poverty exemption resolution, and we do have the resolution here in our packet, but I'm going to go ahead and turn to our new city manager, who, this is his first city council meeting because we did not meet earlier this month. So Mr. Hannethan, can you give an explanation of this for us, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gilroy. We're happy to. So what this does, this allows the, it's pretty straightforward, it's a long resolution, but it does allow poverty exemptions, and it establishes the dollar thresholds for those in the resolution. So as you can see, the concluding statement, now there are four to be resolved pursuant to MCL. City of Williamson adopts the above eligibility requirements, income standards, and asset tests for board review to implement. What that allows is the board review to set those levels and then allow a poverty exemption for property taxes.
Okay, and this is yearly, correct?
It's annual, this is the annual.
It's annual.
Yep.
All right, and I know that we've got a couple new council numbers that probably were not here last year when we did this, but in a nutshell, if you've read through it, it does set thresholds for number of persons within a household. If income exceeds the level listed below, the claimant is not qualified for the poverty exemption. And I believe, John, what this is, is this is to help people out that have circumstances.
That's right. Yep.
Okay, all right.
And they're unable to pay their share of property taxes.
Correct.
So this is a complete exemption or a partial exemption, or a 50% off, or--
It's a, it's a complete exemption.
Complete exemption. Are there any provisions for 50% off?
Um--
The reason I ask is I came from a place in Colorado where once you turn 65, you pay half your property taxes in the whole thing. I kind of like that because I'm over 65.
Ah, he's angling.
You want it for the record, Ben.
We don't have anything like that, though.
This, this is pursuant to Michigan law, correct? So this, Tim?
Yes, it's all or nothing. You either qualify or you don't.
And we would like to stay in Williamson.
There are other statutory exemptions, but we're only focused on the poverty exemption to seven U.
Okay, and again, this is something that we do annually, so you'll see this again next year, beginning of the year. So if there are no other questions regarding this, I'm looking for that motion for the resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to adopt poverty exemption eligibility requirements, income standards, asset tests, and applications for 2022.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. If there's no other questions, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Bellinger?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lianion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right.
Moving on, we have our application and for the Red Cedar Jubilee application and permit for sale and consumption of alcohol in Howard Dalsstrom Memorial Park and Liquor Control Commission Resolution, and this is for our upcoming 2022 Red Cedar Jubilee, which is going back to its rightful place, the third week of June. And if Councilman Ryan's were here, he could fill us in on that because he is on the Jubilee Committee, but he's not here. Do I have a Jubilee member out here in the, in the gallery? Okay, well, this is something that the Jubilee Committee requests and applies for each year, and so do we have any questions regarding this?
Looks like there's lots of people who have to approve it.
Yes, there is. Yes, but they, they are very good at doing their due diligence to make sure that they get all of their required signatures and, and provide us with the information needed. So if there's no questions regarding it, I'm looking for that motion.
I'd make a motion to adopt the Red Cedar Jubilee application, permit for sale and consumption of alcohol in Howard Dalsstrom Memorial Park and Liquor Control Commission Resolution.
All right.
Support.
Approved. Approved. Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
All right.
And I'll support.
Do you need two motions?
I would prefer two motions.
Okay.
One, first to do the application approval and then to do the rest.
Yep.
Oh, it's two, okay.
Yep.
Well, then we'll make a motion to approve the application for the permit and sale of consumption of alcohol in Howard Dalsstrom Memorial Park for the Jubilee.
And I will support.
Thank you both so much. Holly, will you call the roll for the first motion?
Lianion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Now, the resolution.
So I'd make a motion to approve the resolution for the sale of consumption of alcohol in Howard Dalsstrom Memorial Park for the Jubilee.
Second.
Thank you, both. Appreciate it. Holly, will you call the roll for the second motion?
Lianion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, moving along, we have our very last action item, and this is the water treatment plant Tonka service contract. And Scott, you're here.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. So in your packet, there's a memo, and this has to do with our water treatment plant, which has been online now for 10 years. When it was put online, the filter equipment that's in there, we were told, the media that's inside, they didn't have about a 15-year service life. So we had Tonka come out after, I think about three years of in-service, they did some checks and a service visit type of thing. It's time for us to do that thing again. We, we need a plan for the end life of the media and how we're going to go through that process. Something that is, that we are watching is that if you recall that there's natural deposits in this area that increase a little bit of radium in our water, our treatment plant has been able to take that out, that we're concerned that that could be accumulated in the media, and we need to make sure that we're good for how to dispose that, of that and so forth. So the, the service contract is to come do an evaluation, help us with any adjustments that need to be made, provide recommendations for what to do with the media, and then there, we had budgeted, this was a budgeted expense, and for those of you that were on council back in the budget sessions. And within that, not to exceed, we asked for the $10,000, because that's what was budgeted for, it does provide us with an allocation to do some testing on the media of $300 each. So I guess that's, that's the ask, and you got any questions? Do you have an answer?
I have one question, just because I'm completely cognizant of what this is. When it does come time to replace this media, do you have an idea of how much that costs?
Six figures.
Okay.
So the, the media is various types of naturally occurring sands and gravels, but also manufactured products that are, like the resins in the ion exchange processes is actually like a plastic-type material. And so, you know, they range from, you know, things above the size of a millimeter or two, up to larger stones and things like that.
Okay.
And one thing to note, in Scott's memo, this went online in 2012, your three-year check was 2015, so we do have some life left in this, so we shouldn't get scared yet. It said six figures.
Right, yeah, well, and that, that's, well, six figures have been in our CIP planning.
Yes.
But now that we're beginning to get on the tail end of this, we want to really zero in and, and, and understand what's coming at us so that we can have a proper plan as we go through our budget.
So Scott?
Oh, sorry. I'll go with Noah first and then go with Terry.
So there's 10 cells. How big is a cell? And then did you change out two cells?
Individual cells.
Cells as we go to progress, or is it all at one time?
You would want to do it all at one time. There's actually six cells in the iron removal process, and there's four cells in the softening process. You could potentially, Noah, address it, you know, the iron filtration separate than the ion exchange, but I would recommend at least doing those two major parts of the process at once. To do it, though, you know, we're going to be taking parts of the plant down out of, out of production of water, so.
It's just a question.
Yeah.
But thank you for the thinking outside the box.
Terry?
And are we, are we, I don't know the budgeting process for this. Are we setting money aside on a periodic basis, knowing that there's this big expense coming up?
Um, there is some RRI money that we're, we're required to set aside as part of the RD funding, but just like other types of major capital expenses, you have to address it each year. I, I don't know that all that money is earmarked and sitting there just for that, that RRI money is supposed to be there to replace and fix parts of the system that need to be fixed.
And we can dig deeper into that when we go into budget workshops and everything, and that way Rachel will be here, and with Rachel and John, they can explain how we allocate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Scott regarding this? All right, I'm looking for the motion then.
I'll make a motion to author our staff to have Kirka, American International, Minneapolis, Minnesota, perform an evaluation service call on the water treatment plant filter systems in an amount estimated at $6,724 and not to exceed $10,000.
Thank you, Brandon. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you, Terry. If there are no other questions or discussion, Holly, will you call the roll?
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lianion?
Yes.
All right, now, moving along, our discussion items, we have a presentation and discussion of digital message board signs. So who will be coming forward?
I'm going to start. I'm going to start.
Okay, you're going to start, Earl? Sounds good. I saw Adam kind of trying to, you know, come up from behind, so.
He's bigger than me.
He's trying to step in front of the old guy.
It's a discussion item, so we'll just keep it civil.
Absolutely, Earl. You are a consummate professional, so I have no doubt this will be--
Once upon a time, it's a story. Williamson had two daily newspapers. Can you imagine that? Reporters everywhere. You, you knew whose relatives visiting who down the block, and you couldn't get away from it. We knew more then than we know now, and hence the problem. We live in sort of a, I call it, journalists call it a news desert in small communities. So 10 years ago, visiting my parents, Del Porizo, saw this message board downtown, the town looks just like ours, and it's like, why are we not doing this? Long story, 10 years, lots of ups and downs, can't do this, can't do that, don't, void and dot, all this going around and around and around. Then the issue came up in Perry, and Perry put one up, and it was a partnership between the school district and the city for all those things, those fundraisers, those, those Kiwanis garage sales, blah, 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 blah. You know the story. All of that is a constant need for messaging. And so we reformed that committee in the last year, five, counting the past city manager, Sharon LaPointe, who cannot be here because Farmer's Market would be a big, big sponsor and contributor, Narda Murphy from DDA, myself, that represents, you know, Summer Conscious in the Park and the Garden Club of the Museum, and all those things that are constantly, constantly beating a drum of getting their message out, and Dr. Spina from the school district. And see, if this is a partnership, we could craft some kind of animal that could do all these things to benefit the marketing of all the groups we have in this town. So with that, Adam?
That was a great infrogram.
Yeah, that was good. I don't have a story, so I was--
So they have a packet.
I'm also noticing this lecture is way too short for me. Trying to go with my notes here. So again, my name's Adam Spina, and I appreciate you putting this on the agenda for discussion tonight, and I guess we'll start with the bottom line upfront. The, the ask of the committee is that the city of Williamson approve the construction of a digital community messaging board immediately behind and above the current McCormick Park sign located at the corner of Putnam and High Streets. And there are illustrations, I believe, in your packet of the proposed design and location. I want to hit some of the rationale for this. I know Earl touched on it, but I'll kind of go over some of the highlights here. So the programmable sign would allow for public service messages, service club functions, community events, and school district announcements to be better communicated. One of the things that, many things that I love about Williamson is for our community on our side, there's always things going on. Every weekend, every week, there's always things going on. And having the fortune to work in many of the different service with or occasionally collaborate with many of the different service organizations in our community, I mean, even I have a hard time keeping track of like, what is this weekend, what's next Tuesday? Because again, there's so many different things happening. And so, you know, even for myself, this would be a kind of a cool reminder, to be able to walk by there or drive by there and see that, oh yeah, I got to be there tomorrow, or whatever it might be. We know from, you know, a lot of research, and I'll give credit to Earl for doing this, and many conversations that he's had, kind of to take the lead on this with communities in our area, that this is a medium of communication that works. That's why we see a kind of proliferation of this throughout communities, larger than us, smaller than us, and similar to us in the, in our surrounding area. We feel that the location on Putnam and High Streets is an area with a high volume of vehicle and pedestrian traffic, and I believe we put a photograph in your packet that kind of illustrates that. I think even anecdotally, we know that when there's a lot of things going on, that's the location of choice to put a yard sign. And so kind of building on that idea by having a central location to put all those community announcements, at least from an aesthetic standpoint, you're going to hopefully get rid of some of the clutter that tends to spring up along Putnam with all the little yard signs announcing all the different various events. And I think it also has the potential, the enhanced community pride by displaying the, you know, the very unique levels of engagement, opportunities, and public service that are so prevalent in our community. I think most people understand that, but I think this is an opportunity to really showcase that for both internal communication and folks that come into the community from outside saying, look at all the different things that are taking place in Williamson, whether they're coming in for a restaurant or a show or to watch a sporting event. So kind of flipping gears to my role with the schools, Williamson Community Schools is one of the, the interested parties in this initiative. And from the school district's perspective, the sign provides an opportunity for us to share good news and market upcoming events to an audience that might not always know what events and resources are going on in our schools. We could construct a similar sign to this on school property. However, most folks that come to school, our schools on a weekly or even daily basis also tend to be the folks that are, you know, in the know, right? Their parents are stakeholders, they're already probably on at least one or two school newsletters, and so they have a good sense of what's taking place. But by putting it off, off of our property into a location that's so highly trafficked, really provides us an opportunity to share our story with aspects of the community that we don't always reach. I'll give you just some examples, and again, this is just from the school, right? We know all the different service organizations that have a multitude of news to share, but you just look at like the next couple weeks and things that are going on in the school district that we could potentially put on a sign like this. So we have special classes that are being offered by our enrichment department, so that's the pool, the fitness center. We have, we've had, and will continue to have special events raising awareness of student mental health. We have the number one ranked boys' basketball team in the state of Michigan, and our girls' team starts, also the conference champions, start their playoff run tonight, so it'd be a way of advertising that. Six wrestlers competing in the state championships this weekend in Detroit, Ford Field. Our First Robotics team is getting ready to start their competition season, and if you've never seen First Robotics, it is awesome. Like, I know how to play basketball, I have no idea how these kids program those robots and the things they do, it's, it's just unbelievable. We have our school musical that's coming up, and after a two-year hiatus, our Arts Fest is going to come back this April, which, you know, as thousands of people come through the various gyms at the high school, you see all kinds of visual performing arts, it's just a phenomenal, phenomenal opportunity. So you take that out and then you add things like congratulating, congratulating our graduates in the summer, you know, unique achievements, special achievements by students or staff members that we could put on there for the community to, to become aware of. So there's just a multitude of different things that just the school district, not counting all the other service organizations, could put on there to draw awareness, create pride in the community, further pride, greater pride in the community, and just kind of get the word out. So again, to reiterate the, the bottom line, you know, approval by the city allows for local service organizations to tell potential donors that we have the backing of the city council, and that will help us with fundraising initiatives, knowing that we're able to approach donors with a substantive and defined goal established. So that kind of concludes my summary, and I know Earl and I and Narda would be happy to address any questions.
Sure. So I want to say thank you so much, because you guys, this has been a labor love. You've gone to planning commission, you've had MDOT traffic studies for how often signs change. You've really done your homework, and I appreciate this so much because I'm aging myself when I can tell you that I remember People State Bank with the rolling sign right there at Middle and Putnam, and it was a great way to share information. So me personally, I love the idea, and I just want to say thank you so much for putting so much time and effort into it and bringing this new information forward for us. My first question that I've got, and then I'm out open it up to my council members, is if we move forward on this, who would have the responsibility of updating the signage? Who would have access to the software? So would it be on the city's shoulders to continually update, or would there be multiple daily activities, would, Earl, would you have access to the software? So if a request were put in for information to be put on the sign, could you or could the school district update it? How would that look?
Well, the committee agrees, one thing for sure, that it ought to be a professional person that's on the staff, not a volunteer in their basement somewhere. So that's a given. The four, seven entities that we interviewed in this area, each one's different, but all of them are happy. The one in Perry, because it's a cooperative between the city and the school district, the sign is on the school district property, so they are technically the owner of the thing, and so it's a school district IT person who's on full-time. In Corona, it's the city manager, just because they dig doing it. So a larger entity like Holt, it's a staff person at their Parks and Rec Division, and everybody knows, whether it's the school, whether it's the Holt High School, or the Kiwanis Pancake Dinner, they know that's who you send it to, and they take care of it. So I've not found a car, a exact way of who ought to do it.
Sure.
But other than that, it's a full-time employee of a reliable entity, and everybody seems happy.
Sure.
I haven't heard any entity that says, well, I don't like how they do it. It's just.
Well, and I'm assuming that it's a system that you could log in from anywhere, have, give access to, you know, a primary and a backup. So that's the only thing I want to make sure of, that as we move this forward, that we take that into consideration, that if it's going to be a city staff member and a school member that shares that responsibility possibly. Because it does seem like the school would have a lot of messages that they want to get out. They're just listening to Adam go through that, you know, ticker list of just what he, you know, mentioned to us, but also service organizations putting in those requests to have Farmer's Market, you know.
Park Fest.
Park Fest, or Jubilee, or Kiwanis are selling nuts, you know, or the depot has got their ice cream social going on. So I just want to make sure that we cover our bases with, you know, the manpower needed for it, and if, you know.
Well, we didn't come here tonight with a plan for administration.
Sure.
Because that's, that's another discussion.
Sure, absolutely.
You can't even get to that discussion.
Right.
If you can't have the thing.
Right.
So we're at just the have the thing.
Right. Well, I think, I think you guys are on the right path, so I'll go ahead and open it up. Do I have questions from council members regarding this?
A common kind of question. I like this position a lot more than things that we've seen in the past. I know in the past, we had looked at a location that was not at the sign, and that was a little concerning, so I like this a lot more. Question, I think this has been raised to us prior, do we know how much this usually costs to run a year for the account that you looked at?
I asked the Perry treasurer, and she goes, it's so small, I don't even know where it is. It's that small.
I kind of figured, but I wanted to check.
There, in the past, there is a cost for the communication because it's a cellular signal.
Yeah.
But this, this company builds that upfront. There's no cost forever after it's in.
So other questions?
I guess I have kind of a two-part question.
Sure.
First one kind of expands upon what Brandon asked about the financial liability of the sign. So it looks like you guys have done a great job figuring out how to cover all the costs of the initial installation and purchase of the sign. My question is, who becomes responsible from there forward on updates, maintenance, repairs, things of that nature?
If it's on city property, it's yours. That's how we tell, whether it's the playground or the band shell, it's now a city property. And in Perry, it belongs to the school district because it's on their property. So I asked Rachel, if a snowplow knocks it down, well, that's insurance. If it breaks, what's that? So, you know, I asked the manufacturer, what could possibly break? He says, well, I've put in 60 the last 20 years, none of them have broken.
Right.
The only moving part is a fan, because there's a computer in there, and that's a $200 item, and that's, that's covered all, the first five years anyway, so it's.
I'm thinking if lightning hits the thing and fries it, then who's going to pay to replace it? We build it right in Perry.
I think there's a model for success that's already been established though, between the city and service organizations, whether it's the playgrounds or, you know, the band shell. I mean, so there's a vested interest by all of us to make sure that this is maintained once it's installed, and again, based on the track record of success we've had with those collaborations, that's something I feel, I personally feel comfortable with.
Right. I would agree. Terry, did you hear a question?
As long as it doesn't cause any arguments, because there's six lines of text that, you can fill up those six lines with that list you had right there, you can fill up all six of those lines. And so long as there aren't any, if you said everybody's happy, that's, that's good to know.
Well, and so fingers in some pockets.
It's a scrolling, it's a scrolling signage. Every four seconds, it's going to change, and that was my other thing, too.
Something that Planning Committee looked at, I don't know, months ago. We had looked at and changed the statute from what we used to have to adopt a newer, more accessible model, like updating of how often it changes. It was like once every hour or some ridiculous thing like that. So now we updated it, so it's more reasonable, so it will update, so more people, so you can have Williamson Schools update that one, and then, you know, the Farmer's Park can do the next one, so it'll be updated.
I think that's why the location is so important, at least, you know, again, looking at it from the school's perspective, because you're going to get that multiple iterations during the same passage through the area versus some other locations where that might not be the case.
And I have to say, I love this design now. You guys have brought forward so many different, this is great. This really is sharp.
We're going to get it right eventually, so.
Yeah.
It's also a lot cheaper, because you're looking at one.
Right.
Sure.
And that two.
Right.
There's no discount for two, you're just doubling the cost.
Right.
So this is now one, and we're also thinking of the safety crossing issue.
Sure.
The distraction, it's sort of, instead of looking at beyond where people are going.
Right.
It's at the same place.
Yeah.
So you're going to slow down.
I guess that's the second part of my two-part question, too, is more maybe Chief, because I'm in, because I know originally you had expressed some concerns about this location because of the heavy foot traffic, especially in times of Jubilee or National Night Out or what have you, with it being a distraction to drivers. How do you feel about this?
I've got good feeling about this one. I just, I, I think it's a great location, I think it's going to get a lot of notice. I don't think it's so much in the, to distract the drivers much.
Right.
I mean, I, I like it a lot. Yeah, so this is a good design.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, because this is for discussion only, I mean, when this comes to council, I assume we discovered our first meeting in March, we can, staff can provide a brief analysis on like kind of the lifecycle cost for these things.
Perfect.
I know Joe Sawyer at Corona, kind of surprised he likes begging out the keyboard to make the message, but good for him.
Right.
But we can, we can do some comparables on that.
Okay.
Like what it might cost. You know, most of the, most of the cost is in the actual sign, because it's LEDs and, you know, we all know computers are cheap, and the software is relatively simple.
Okay.
So even if it gets hit by lightning, that's a, you know, if it gets run over, that's what it's really costing.
So I like what you just said there, John, that we could possibly have this on the first agenda in March, so that we can keep the momentum moving forward. So would that be an action item with a resolution of support from council then?
Correct.
Okay.
The other thing we would have to do is make sure, this, the resolution should mention that there'll be a use policy.
Yes.
I'm sure Mr. Pearl would tell that, too. There has to be some, some rules for what can and can't be said on the messaging.
My main concern would be that this is government speech. The city is giving a message, that we're not creating a public forum.
Right.
Where all comers will have the ability to put something on there.
Correct. Correct.
Because once you open that up, you can't discriminate on the basis of viewpoint or the content of the speech. But if it's government speech, well, then we can say what we want to say, and we're not going to say anything that we don't want to say.
Right. Do we need to look into possibly, like, what a Corona or what some of these other municipalities have as far as their language then? Yep. To be able to write policy?
And with that, the risk of, you know, making this un- overly bureaucratic, it's a simple, it's a simple policy. We just have to have something so rolled together.
Okay, great.
The question of the dollars, but you're not asking for dollars from us tonight or anything like that, right?
We have a commitment from Rotary, we're all members of Rotary, by the way.
Seven thirty in the morning.
Yeah. And some verbal commitments, obviously, as you mentioned, from the school district, but also for some other entities, Farmer's Market, et cetera, et cetera. But no, we're not been knocking on that door to get to the goal line without city approval.
It's a tricky thing, right? Until, until we get permission from the council, it's hard to approach donors to say this is a for-sure thing.
Yep.
So that's kind of where we're at at this point.
Well, then, John, I'd like to see that on council agenda for our first meeting in March, so that we can keep the momentum moving for that. I think we're all in agreement that this is something really great for the community. And again, you know, kudos to the hard work and for keeping and pushing it forward, Earl. You know? He has been at a lot of meetings.
Bull dog, right?
He really has, the whole group, but, you know, Earl took, Earl was at planning, and Brandon, you can, you can second that, he came with all the information that planning needed to be able to make the right decision on, on how they change some of that language so that it could help this endeavor. So I appreciate all of you being here.
All good.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes our discussion items for this evening. One correspondent received information only, and that is that as we do yearly, we endorse or that we, you know, support the National School of Choice Week, which you have a email in your packet that you can read, but we do this every year. So it's, it's great that we have outside community members that want their students to come and learn in Williamson, because again, hats off to Adam and the entire school district for being, you know, just top-notch.
Yeah, I don't know what that was for, but I'll take the conversation.
It was for National School of Choice Week, Adam.
Well, there will be a need to help.
So they embrace students from outside the Williamson community. I think that's great. All right, now we can go ahead and move on to our department head report, and we'll start out with John, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. I included a written report, just, I guess, the highlights, we did receive the Memorial Park Engineering Grant Award, the county's going to fund that, so that's good news. The lead business attraction, work group, very interesting about the lack of manufacturing space that's available now in our region, and so some of the talk is about the, some builders are going to start building manufacturing space on SPAC, which is, that hasn't been done in a long time. And SPAC means specification, that they're going to build it, then look for kind of, so, so there's a lot of good things happening in the region. Again, I also mentioned, I'll be setting up meetings with all of you, either in person or just, you know, a half hour phone call, so just to get to know each other better, and I've been meeting with various members in the community the last couple of weeks, and happy to be here.
Great. Excellent.
I just want, for the record, I want to say that the $2 million accounts payable is not because I started working. That was before I started working here, so.
Not a problem. All right, Chief, how are you?
Ah, great.
Good.
Thank you. Just wanted to give you a quick update, our newest officer has rocked through his FTO. We are full, six full-time officers working the road. I've staggered their schedules, so we, we're shooting for at least two patrol cars on, for almost 20 hours of the day. Trying to, my next move is to get a four-to-four car, so he's out there until four in the morning to back up that midnight officer on those high-risk calls.
Sure.
Be it a drunk driver, a flight, domestic, what have you. Trying to make ourselves more independent than having to rely on our outside partners, which is not a bad thing, it just takes some time to come from Meridian or the county.
Right.
To travel here when we've got that serious incident going on. So maybe sometimes, you may see three patrol cars out there, if I grab one and head out on the road just to get out there. And I just want to say thanks for Chief Yance, and we do have a great relationship with all the NISA command staff. We do collaborate, we are moving forward with some planning and training together with them in the event of other serious incidents that may happen. He did mention about some of the traffic thing, and to mention that incident, that driver came in as a 911 call as a reckless driver, and we did have an officer out there searching for that car within minutes of that call, and that's Officer Pintar, Detective Pintar, and by the time he got behind that guy, before he could affect the traffic stop, is when he, that driver, ineligible driver, under the influence of a controlled substance, struck that stop and old head. I've personally handled two distracted driver calls, and they've been elderly people just falling asleep, tired, and this corner does get them. I've got two of them past this corner, and they're, they're just, you know, it's just bad situations. And I did call Ingle County Central Dispatch, Dispatch, and our center alone had over 5,000 reckless driving complaints called in, with over 400 of them possibly intoxicated drivers. With that being said, Ingle County's stats are, there was almost 7,000 crashes in our county last year, 15 fatalities, 1,400 serious injuries, and over 5,500 property damage accidents. Of those, almost 7,000 crashes, 5,300 around local streets and emeralds. So it is out there. Since COVID, things have changed with driver aggression, road rage, people mentioning speeding through town. When I do go out, I mean, I'll work patrol, and I'm knocking them off at 20 over. So put that, I had one 56 out of 35 going by Sunnyside. I no sooner got done with that one, flipped around, I had another one at 50 out of 35, and they're both out of towners. So, and I know a lot of you saw that spark on Facebook where we had two cars stopped, one was 43 out of 25, one was running a stop sign. So these aren't just piddly traffic stops, these are serious stops in residential areas. And we all know about the faster you go, the longer it takes you to stop. And I did some little quick research, the best of road conditions on zero grade, and taking the one-second perception reaction, and that's the best-case scenario, that's not looking at your phone, that's not looking this way and missing something this way, that's the best-case scenario. It takes you time to hit your brake, and going 25 miles an hour takes you 67 feet. Okay? That's not too bad, that's not very far, unless you've got a two-year-old running across the street. Going 10 miles an hour faster, at 35 miles an hour, it's 110 feet. So that's 43 feet more that's taken that car to stop. And those are the lower speeds. And you start getting to the higher speeds, at 55 miles an hour, that's 225 feet. And that's not unheard of, I'm seeing those tickets being written at 20, 30 over our speed limits. So we are aggressive out there, would you take it very serious? Because we do want to protect our citizens, especially in this residential, or the downtown area. I mean, I'll sit, you'll see that patrol car sit right by the, on the side, just watching cars. I see people going by with their phones up, and that's, again, that's not your best-case scenario with stopping. And we have, we have kids running out of the theater, you know, trying to cross that street to get over there, or into the Chinese restaurant, I mean, the restaurants, so if I do take a little slack, you're right, I am, I am very serious about traffic safety. That's why I made Joe Pintar my detective, because he is good at that. That's not my cup of tea, I like traffic, and I like to keep things safe. And I think our ticket ratio is 30%, you know, of the warnings we give, so.
Sure.
It's more, it's just, you know, the traffic's not talking to somebody, if that's satisfying, you're right, I'm so sorry, we're good to go.
Sure.
Enough said, so that, and that's our goal, is to keep everybody safe and make it, you know, for the citizens. So, and I just want to touch base on that, and with that being said, I know I write it on for long, but I just want to do a little, she's still, the Ingle County Executive Director, Barb Davidson, I just wanted to recognize her, she's not doing this, and I think she'll chat with us afterwards, but I just wanted to recognize her, but her, her shop is just a great partner of ours, I mean, they are true professionals, they do a great job of keeping us all safe out there, checking on us and keeping us moving, so I just wanted to say thank you to you and your staff.
Thanks for being here, Barb.
Hey.
I was going to come up and say something at a public comment at the end. Okay, well, great, I appreciate that. And Chief, you know, I'm just going to second that, and when I was reserve officer, I know that we had a lot of people coming out, you know, they dump off of the highway because there's a backup, so they feel that, oh, if I get off here, I can, I can scoot through Grand, you know, onto Grand River, and they, it's education. Every time you stop somebody that's out of town or coming through our town, it's an education, and hopefully they won't do it if they come through our town again. But it is all about the safety of our pedestrians downtown in those four corners, we know that there's issues down there. So, you know, my hats off to all of, you know, our officers that are out there doing that, and yes, we do get a lot of social media attention when somebody puts something out there, but I think we handle it with grace, and, you know, at the end of the day, when the city comes under fire on social media, I think the best way to handle that is to let our city staff handle it and not take that fight on ourselves, because we do have to hold ourselves to a little bit higher standard and not get into those online arguments. So again, I think you guys are doing a great job, I'm sure the rest of our council, you know, feels that way, too, and keeping, you know, our community safe is your top priority.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that you guys recognize that. We're complaint-driven, when we get complaints, you know, three or four residents on a certain stretch, we'll sit a patrol car out there, oh yeah, we've got a resident complaining of people running the stop sign over on Jackson Mill. We'll sit there, and guess what?
Yep.
We see them blowing the stop sign, you know, it's like.
I think, you know, when you live in a community like this and you drive these roads, you know, when you live here, sometimes it, you do, you get lazy, and so, you know, just remember, you know, we just want everybody to be safe.
Quick question, it says it was 5,000 crashes per year, is that Ingle County?
That was just Ingle County's stats, I pulled.
Now, this, this NISA thing, it's North Ingle County, right? So do we divide it up that way as well? Some, like, you have a certain area that you cover, there's other people that do other areas, but this is all of Ingle County then?
I, I just pulled the stats from Ingle County, some of dispatch, of what that was for the whole county, all the, all the, all of it. I didn't lock it down to our area, our certain, our crashes, I don't think there was, I, well, we know one of our batteries is out there at Linden Williamson, I mean, that's, we're handling a lot of crashes out there, so something had to be done, but, um.
It's, it seems like a large number, I'm just, wow.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, we do have our report from Livingston County Department of Building and Safety Engineering in here, um, we are still seeing a lot of, uh, activity, and so that's always good. If you have questions, you can certainly contact, um, John, have John pass along a question and get an answer for you, um, but it's, it's good to see that, that there's still quite a bit of activity going on. Uh, subcommittee and committee reports, I will start down here with Tom, do you have anything to report?
Uh, we did have an easy meeting since we've last met, uh, wasn't a lot on the agenda except for lacking a new member, so Ms. Torquay Harp is the new chair, I got elected vice-chair, so we're excited, looking forward to keep moving things forward.
Excellent, thank you. Mike, anything?
Planning is not mine.
All right, great. Terry?
Parks and Rec did not need.
Okay, all right. Noel? You, you have, you went to DDA for me.
Yeah, things are good as usual, but back to the NISA, um, I was still passed on and I am still on the Personnel Committee, so one of the things, just to let you know, I think we're gonna start looking at some of the standard operating procedures and trying to get some of that updated, so, we'll start working on that.
Great, all right, well, thank you, gentlemen, for that. And now we have another opportunity for audience participation, come up to the podium. And if you could just state your name, the entity you're with.
Barb Davidson, I'm the Director of Ingle County 911. I've been the Director there now for about six months. Um, one of our goals, um, as an entity, is to be a little bit more available to you, just in general, when we feel like, well, for sure, for sure, you're our customer. I need to know what your expectations of us are, and I need to make myself more available to be able to do that, so you're gonna see my face a little bit more often.
Great.
Um, just to echo what the chief said, and they did not pay me to come up here and say this, you should be very proud of them both. The numbers that they serviced last year and in this year is, it's impressive, everybody is doing more with less, everybody is, and they are. Um, the chief hit on it, but I feel like I need to say it again, we're talking about 6,000 calls for service that are, is somebody reporting, somebody in Ingle County that is driving in a manner that was so reckless, it spurred them to call 911. That's 6,000 calls, that my call-takers aren't doing something else, and I applaud the chief's efforts here in Williamson, I'm glad that he's doing that. That's less calls for me, that means less work for my folks.
6,000 in one year in Ingle County?
Correct. Yeah. My center serviced almost 330,000 calls last year, um, plus about 16,000 text messages, so, um, anything that we can do to make that number less, I would love it, I don't think that is, um, the trend, it isn't, more every year, it's more. Um, so before I was the Director, I was the Staff Services Manager at the Center, and I was here in 2018 and spoke with this committee about increasing the phone search charge to pay for a public safety radio system, and I have not been back since, I actually left Ingle County. You for a little while and have been back for six months, yes.
I knew you was familiar, so come back more often.
That's what we said. So I thought I'd just give you a super quick update on the radio system and where it went, so it passed. Um, so we did, went live on MPSCS on September the 7th, um, the transition for a project this size, frankly, I was so impressed with it. Um, the, our partners communicated with us, we communicated, everybody was on the same page, and we did, we flipped the switch and we were on. We distributed roughly 2,200 mobile, portable, and pagers with this system, that was part of, um, part of it, so, the radio the chiefs are wearing, those are new, and the patrol cars as well, um, two and a half months ahead of schedule, I'm getting all of the apparatus and police cars installed with their new mobile, so we're really happy about that. Um, so at this point, we are in the decommissioning of the old, um, getting rid of all of that stuff, um, that's, we're gonna try to sell it, I don't, I don't know, we'll see. I know that unfortunately, there's probably some public safety entity that is, was in the situation we were in, which was with a system that was beyond its end of life that needs a little help with some spare parts, so. Um, so far, we're very happy with the system's performance, one of the big goals was coming on to this system was interoperability, um, with our partners, neighboring counties, et cetera. Livingston County unfortunately likes to comment in, sometimes we don't do that, we do, but, um, so we've seen multiple examples already of when Nisa's had to go in Fallerville, I mean, less with more, for sure, so mutual aid is some, a part of their daily existence. Um, so being able to communicate with each other in a safe manner, that was paramount to the reason why we put the system up. So, we've had, it's been great so far, I really haven't had any complaints. We did have an opportunity right at the beginning of it to see if the system could flex its muscles a little bit, as you well know, we hosted the University of Michigan at a home football game here in October.
Yes.
Um, just so you can kind of get an idea, um, we ran the numbers for a normal Saturday on what we would call push-to-talks, which means every time Chief keys his mic, that's push-to-talk, 7,500, that's standard, um, Saturday night, that's about 34,000 seconds of talking. Uh, the U of M game, 16,030 push-to-talks and about 80,291 seconds of speech, so, it flexed its muscles and it's never got above 25% capacity, so we're super happy with it. Clinton County's just about to come on, that's gonna benefit this area for sure, I mean, that's part of it, it's a huge robust system, so it's not just our towers in Ingle County and that, we can actually utilize theirs as well.
Excellent.
So I'll be around a little more, I'm gonna leave some cards just on the bench in case anybody needs to get a photo of me, I, I would like to reiterate that, we are here for you, that's our job, so.
Well, thanks so much for coming up, Barb, and yes, please do not be a stranger, you know, let Chief know we wanna come in and share some more good information and, and congrats on a successful launch of the new radio system.
We are going to be also reaching out to you, because one of the other things we'd like to do is to have reinvigorate citizen academies to be able to come into the center and see us work, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, great, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks so much for being here. Any other audience participation? Well, yeah, go ahead, Chief.
Two other quick things.
Yes.
Um, one thing, I do think the sign is a good idea, um, we've had some issues when we, like, issued burning bans, and I know that we don't really allow burning in the city anyway, but, and we have had people comment that, you know, if there was a message board, I would've known, even though, most of the time we think they knew anyway. But that would definitely be a benefit if we had some of those emergency-type situations. We've also talked about using our facility as a warming center, um, or cooling center, depending on the time of year, so if we did run into something like that, that might be a good place to, to tell people where they could go if they, if they needed to.
Great.
One thing I will mention, and I haven't had a chance to meet with the city manager yet, and I would greatly like to do that at some point, um, is that, uh, in regards to signs, we still continuously have problems with that veterinary sign that's out and more or less in front of our building. Um, we've had several accidents happen there, where people, um, think that that's where the entrance is to that veterinary clinic, um, it is actually offwinding river, uh, but, um, they, uh, they smash it up, um, they drive through our parking lot on a daily basis going in through the exit, which if you come around that corner, it's a blind corner, and we've had several incidences where we've almost had head-on collisions with the ambulances and the fire trucks coming around that corner. A lot of it is older people, um, just 'cause they're confused, they see that veterinary sign and they think that's where, um, they'll also pull into that turnaround, 'cause there's like a circle drive. For, any of you guys have been around for a lot of years, there used to be a big A-frame hubcap shop there?
Like Sodel's hubcap shop.
Yes. Um, they literally drive across our lawn, um, and the lawn is for the, um, we've had people get stuck in the snow where we've had to help pull them out of there, um, but there's constantly on a daily basis people driving through our lot, and it is, it is just not a safe situation.
Okay.
Um, I did attempt to go over and talk to the, the veterinary clinic about that, and, um, I was pretty much told to get out and they didn't wanna speak to me, so I, uh, I, I really don't know what to do or what can be done about it, but it is definitely a huge safety risk.
Okay. Well, thanks, Mike, appreciate that. Thanks for being here again tonight.
No problem.
Um, I would like to have my MSU journalism student stand up and introduce herself, I told her earlier today when we were speaking that I'd have her, I'd give her a shout-out, so Madison, go ahead and, um, just introduce yourself and tell us what year you're at in MSU.
Hi, everyone, yeah, I'm Madison Court, I'm a sophomore at MSU, I'm studying Journalism and Public Relations, um, I'm here on behalf of my Journalism 300 class, um, I'm reporting the beat of Williamson, so I've done several stories here, um, I reported on the Williamson Area Senior Center, um, recently, and I also reported on the library, and so, both really great stories, um, and I'm really interested, I'm probably gonna report, um, on the message board discussion from tonight, that really interested me, so I look forward to talking to, uh, Mr. Landon, Lanan, Lanning, excuse me, afterwards, and, uh, anybody else who, um, would like to be featured, I would love to talk to you. So, yeah, I've really enjoyed my time reporting for Williamson, and this is the first time that I've, uh, been able to come out, um, and actually come to the town, so I enjoyed my drive-through, it's a very cute downtown, so, yeah, I look forward to reporting here more.
Great, well, we had a great conversation earlier today, and like I said, Madison, um, we have a lot of meetings throughout the entire month, uh, Planning Commission, Downtown Development Authority, the council meeting, so feel free to come out, uh, whenever, and, um, we're just, you know, we're, I'm always excited when we have the journalism students here, because it really is a great program that you guys do the stories and, and feature the communities that the way, the way you guys do, so, thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for having me. All right, um, I believe that's it for our audience participation, so I'll go around the table for council member comments, and I'll start down here, Noel.
I'm none for the safety.
Terry.
Glad to have you on board.
Thank you. Braden.
Say something, glad to have you aboard.
Tom?
Welcome, Joe.
Did you want to? [Laughter]
No, I, no, I don't. I talked to the board.
Well, I just wanna thank John for coming, but I also wanted to make sure that he doesn't forget where he came from, so, if you could pass it down to John, he can put that in his office, little, little, uh, token, uh, for you to remember Chelsea and your time there, little box of Jiffy Corn muffin mix.
They throw these in the parade there.
I do, really. Oh, wow, I don't think I'm gonna get hit by one, but, um, but, yeah, so, I'm looking forward to, um, rolling up sleeves and, and starting to work with you, John, I know we have had a couple discussions, and, and, um, you came in at the right time, so we can do goal-setting and get right into budget season, and, and so I know you're making your rounds through, through, uh, the service organizations and, and meeting with a lot of people, and, and I'm sure that they will welcome you with open arms.
Yeah.
Great.
What's the date of the budget thing, when do we start that?
You'll get noticed, you'll get, you'll get a notice.
Okay.
Not gonna tell you tonight, Rachel's not here. But, uh, Chief, really quick, uh, no parking 2:00 to 5:00 AM till the end of this month, correct?
Correct.
All right, so, until the end of March.
We're getting close.
Unless there is a snow event after March, um, you know, I would just ask that you be cognizant of that and, um, keep DPW in mind, because after our recent snow events,